All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. I'm glad you could find your way here because I feel like I haven't seen any of you in so long. We had only one meeting last month and then a fifth Tuesday term is there for good measure. So tonight, Pradeep and Signe both let me know they are not feeling well and will not come to this. So hopefully they're feeling better. So we'll just go ahead and get started. Next week, there's one presentation, which is a proclamation to recognize the 30th anniversary of Dr. Finley's family eye care. So we'll recognize them. And if there are no comments or questions on that, we'll move right in. Okay, next up is our public hearings. The first one is an ordinance to grant a 10-year telecommunications franchise to NCI Metro Access Transmission Services of Virginia. We'll follow the bid process and action will be by roll call vote next week. And Kami Chastain, our deputy director of public works, is here for the staff report.
Good evening. So yes, this is, as you mentioned, a franchise for NCI Metro Access. This one did expire, and so there's nothing new. It is just simply a new agreement for their current lines that are in the town for 10 years.
Boy, that's complicated.
It is.
Typically, they would have extended following, you know, before the expiration, but they did not do that.
But it just lasts.
So we have to adopt a whole new franchise.
And just typically, a telecommunications franchise agreement used to be, well, lately, they've been like 15 years, right? So the 10 years is actually a little bit better.
A little.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's kind of what we're just thinking about.
Yeah, for sure. Just, you know, at this, they were doing 15-year contracts back in the 90s, so they still are.
Any other questions or comments?
So kind of like a passport, if you let it expire, you gotta go through the whole line.
Exactly.
That's exactly. But we're faster than the federal. That's our goal.
And you gotta do a roll call.
All right. Our next public hearing is an ordinance to approve the conveyance of town-owned property on Eldon Street to VDOT for the widening of East Eldon Street. This will also be a roll call vote next week. And John Irish is here from Department of Public Works for the staff report. It's the DPW Show tonight. They're showing off for their new director. You guys haven't met our new deputy, our new Department of Public Works director. He's here.
This is actually a joint effort with the town attorney and myself. I'll give you the technical side of it. Essentially, it's part of the East Eldon Street widening project. There are two parcels of town-owned property. This is basically Eldon Street. Maybe I didn't need to do that. But anyway.
That's okay.
Hernan Parkway is right here. You're facing north. This is Eldon Street. On the south side, the colored marks are different easements and right-of-way that are required by this project. Unfortunately, the way VDOT works in this is we grant these easements to them for the construction of the project. And then, at some point in the future, all of that will come back to us as easements that will be back onto our own property. Now, don't explain, don't ask me to explain why they have to do it that way, but that is the way VDOT operates. And that's what this is for. And then on, how do we get it back? Right. On the north side, it's essentially the same scenario. It's just a, another set of right-of-ways. This is where the bridge is across the Sugarland Run. And we have property, obviously, on the north side. And again, we have easements here. And we have both right-of-way, the red drainage easements are the green. Pink is joint use, which means joint between VDOT and Dominion. And then the yellow or orange are temporary or construction easements. And that essentially is what this is. So these easements are to convey that property rights to VDOT, and then, at some point forward, it returns back to the town.
So as you can imagine, there are many parcels along Eldon Street that VDOT has to acquire. They are, we are one of the ones that they're beginning with because they thought we'd probably be cooperative. We'd like the road widened. But they'll be doing similar things with many parcels. They have to show sufficient progress in acquisition. So again, that's another reason why we're one of the ones that are upfront. We were given, in your package, in your agenda, you've packaged, you have the actual offer letters and the deeds and all of the incentives that go along with the transfer of the property. This has been done, not recently, but last time was probably in the 90s, when VDOT performed some widening down at the other end of Eldon Street. And the same process of transferring to VDOT, VDOT transferring back once the project is completed. So as the mayor has indicated, this will be by a roll call vote in two weeks and, I'm sorry, next week. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Either technical or legal.
Any questions also? Straightforward. Ready? Two. One.
Thank you.
Good. Next up is a resolution to approve a temporary license agreement to use a designated public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating for an event. And I'll recognize our town attorney for this one.
I think that this council has approved at least one, maybe some of you approved a few, for similar types of license agreements for Jimmy's Old Town Tavern to use the alley, which belongs to the town behind their property for outdoor seating for an event. This particular event will occur on September 1st. They filed their temporary use permit and gotten their other permits, and now they're just asking for permission from the town to do that. I believe we've included, we did include, included the actual license agreement as well as the application, which has details about the event. And we have their insurance certificate in there as well.
So this is like what we did back for the Memorial Day event?
In May, over the, yes. And I think Mr. Stromberg told us previously, they're only allowed to have three events, anyone is only allowed to have three.
Yeah, they're limited to three per year.
Oh, I thought it was four. Let's see.
It's three events, four days per event.
I knew there was a four in there somewhere. Okay, any questions or comments? Sheila?
So are we gonna correct the date on this letter?
It's incorrect.
Okay, the one in here is not correct.
Yeah, the staff report was incorrect, but the rest, everything else was correct. So the add person was correct.
And the staff report was corrected on Monday.
And the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. I guess it was.
And also, do they have to stop the music by 10?
At 10. Yes, they have a noise permit.
Okay, good. As I was gonna say, they always make my neighborhood cut it off at 10.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Probably he'll submit the noise permit to me at some point, and it's always stipulated at 10 o'clock.
It's in there that way, right? I saw it in there. Yes.
Yeah, but it's limited at a time.
So this sheet is your noise ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, guys. And finally, I think we're all excited about this one, a resolution to consider the Hernan Bicycle Network Master Plan. And I think Bryce Perry, our deputy director of CBI, is here for the staff report.
Hey, Bryce.
Hey. Feel bad, y'all were kind of cruising along here. Try to.
This is good.
Remember our first meeting? We have the bicycle plan. Okay. So the draft Town of Hernan Bicycle Network Master Plan is the town's first official long-range planning document dedicated solely to bicycle infrastructure, planning, design, policy, and programming. Of course, we've had the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which does have a lot of great guiding language in regards to roofing, viability in the town, which has helped us for many years. And we've also had the Hernan Master Trails Plan, which is in the comp plan, which lays out the existing and planned shared use trails in town, also providing some guidance to us. It was really in 2010 to 2012 is when we started to move a little bit beyond what's guided, what we have guiding us in the comp plan. That was when the county, Fairfax County, was conducting their big bicycle plan study, and we were getting involved into helping them create their first countywide bicycle plan to include Town of Hernan. So as part of that effort, that went through P-VAC and the Planning Commission and ended up with town council. Town council endorsed the county's plan via resolution. And with that resolution, each bicycle around town was identified, and not just location, but the facility type. And then that fed into the county's plan. So basically, long story short, even though this is the town's first bicycle plan, it really is building off of that earlier effort with the county. So this will be adopted as a town plan, and of course, the town will have control over it and be accountable for it and not be tied to the county plan. This plan was developed largely with P-VAC serving as the steering committee for it, and it was reviewed by the Planning Commission. The draft that you all have is the version that was recommended by both P-VAC and Planning Commission. So why bike plan for the town? Not sure how much I need to go into this. It is a need for a growing community or an urbanizing community in some aspects. Community that has a population that relies on various forms of transportation to get around town, in and out of town. The town's made an effort to pursue sustainable policies and practices and pursue improvements focused on access, mobility, and safety for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. So as the town continues with those efforts, it's important to ensure that there's a clear and consistent direction for both policymakers and the implementers like staff and our design consultants and developers for both the planning, bicycle planning, and the design decisions for bicycle infrastructure. The plan also serves a little bit of a didactic role, in an awareness role, really, by promoting and encouraging cycling as a viable alternative mode of travel. And you'll see that throughout the document. And it's obvious, but it's important to point out, the plan functions to improve the level of service for cyclists. So level of service is really this umbrella term that we use for all the conditions that are offered to cyclists, whether it's, whether it's the design of facility, access to facility, continuity of a facility, how it's maintained, all those elements go into what defines the level of service for the overall bicycle network. What's actually in the plan? It's comprised of three parts. The first part is, has to do with policy guidance for planning and design of bicycle infrastructure. That's the principles and objectives portion of the document. Then there's a long-range plan for network improvements and a profile of the existing network. And then lastly, there's a profile of the existing bicycle program and with some specific project highlights, and that's the final chapter. So for that first section, again, that's the policies, the principles and the objectives, it's the shortest section. I think it's only two pages long, but it's probably the most important section. It really lays the basis, the foundation, for the rest of the document. And I suppose to use the way it's supposed to be used, it really will serve as that faces for all the town bicycle planning and design decision forward. I'm not, I'm not gonna go through these lists. We can certainly go back at the end of the presentation if you have specific questions about the principles and objectives that are listed in there, and we can talk about They are, these are just, these are just, this is just a quick breakdown, a summary. They're obviously much more fleshed out in the document itself. The, here is the network map. This map shows all the existing and the planned bicycle routes, their location and their facility types. The solid lines are existing. The dashed lines are proposed, many of which are already programmed in towards CIP. Each facility type is color-coded, so there's mixed-use trails, cycle tracks, bicycle arrows. There's at least, there's, yeah, there is, the color is actually pretty bad, and I might need to take a look at changing that. But there are a few that we're not exactly sure what facility type will work yet, so it's kind of like a TBD. You know, we need something, we just don't know what exactly will work yet. This is not, the map is shrunk down here, shrunk down in the document to fit in the document, but it's, the base of it is an RJIS interactive map. And so for the end user, they won't be, it won't be, it won't interact with it the same way that we are now, as a sort of static dot. There are several changes between this map and the map that was endorsed as part of the county's bike plan back in 2012. I wanted to point out more than anything else, that this revised map provides bicycle accommodations for the entire town, throughout the entire town. The old plan kind of missed a few parts of town. So I'm gonna go from back and forth here. So this is what is currently in play. This is the endorsed, the endorsed county plan. And you'll see that really, in the southwest quadrant of town more than anywhere else, there's sort of a lack of dedicated bicycle facilities. So we've sort of tried to fill in some of those gaps with this revised version. And the main idea here is to make sure that we do have, there is some sort of access in all the different neighborhoods, and there is access that makes sense from those neighborhoods into both the Hernan Material Station and the Innovation Station, which we sometimes tend to forget, right over there. So we wanted to make sure those connections were made. Again, this is, I'm not gonna go through each of the individual facility types, but we can, if anybody wants to talk about it, especially if we want, we can certainly go back and talk about it. And then when we, as I'm talking about all these different facility types, what I'm really referencing is the different designs that are used for each, each of the routes. So I wanna go through each of these types, just so you all have an image of your head. And when I say "sharrow" is what it is that we're actually talking about. Sometimes, as planners, you just kind of like assume everybody knows exactly what we're talking about, and that might not always be the case. So "sharrow," "shared arrows" is what it's, is a combination of, but these are on-street bicycle markings that are employed in situations where the bicycles share the lane with the vehicles. So we use these really onward, low-speed roads, roads with low vehicle volumes, because you can do, you have that sharing condition. You'll see these on Park Avenue today. Bicycle lanes, probably the most common one, you'll see, this is also an on-street facility. It is a dedicated, difference between this and "sharrow" is that it is a dedicated path. It's not a sharing condition with any other mode of travel. You'll see these on Drainsville Road. Buffered bicycle lanes, this is really the preferred option where space allows it. So this is, same thing as standard bicycle lane, except that there's some more horizontal separation between the travel lane and the bicycle lane. In this instance, they're just marking that. In other instances, you'll see like flexi posts or a physical, actual physical barrier. Then, cycle tracks, these are off-street. They are typically above the curb. These facilities can either be one-way, which is what's shown here, or two-way, which is what's shown here. This is very similar to the design that we'll be using, that you already see a little bit of along Hernan Parkway on the south side of town. The one-way cycle track is part of the design for the bicycle facility on East Eldon, it's part of the East Eldon Street project, east of Hernan Parkway. So we'll see that as well. So the last section of the plan, as I earlier mentioned, gets into the bicycle program, which is currently comprised, which, as currently comprised, is largely an interdepartmental effort between development and public works and HPE and Parks and Rec. We're fortunate to also have P-VAC that provides a good advisory support for the program. We're also fortunate enough to have a strong comp plan that has a lot of multimodal emphasis and recent master plans with downtown, the H-Talk, the Stell Building, that include a number of provisions regarding bicycle infrastructure. A large part of the program is managing the many CIP projects that have imported bicycle components to them, and managing the Streetscape Manual and the other design guidelines for the downtown and for the H-Talk, that's really to ensure that the bicycle facilities that are in there are properly considered and properly designed. For some ongoing and upcoming program initiatives that are also summarized in the plan itself, these include transportation demand management plans, TDM plans. Those are basically frameworks of strategies that are employed by developments to reduce personal vehicle usage and encourage alternate means of transportation. There's, other initiatives include continuing incorporation of bicycle parking and zoning ordinance, an expansion of design standards and guidelines for bicycle facilities, the establishment of a program and policies for bicycle sharing and personal transporters, like scooters and segways and hoverboards and all those other things that exist nowadays. And the last one, a development of a complete streets policy that guides transportation improvements to consider enhancing service levels for all users, not just for vehicles. And that wraps up the presentation for me.
Okay. Questions? Say so, or is the chair or the deputy, if you need to bring up or add?
Staff and community have been amazing. I just wanna publicly state that. And I'm stoked about the whole concept, right, positioning, like every neighborhood connected.
Yep.
And that's just, to me, that's, that's huge, especially for a big part of the community that really relies on their bicycles to get around. Nice to hear that.
Are there other comments or questions?
Well, we've come a long way since the 2010, 11, when Melissa Jonas was on the Planning Commission, and she was on the P-VAC committee with me, and I was the chair. We spent over six hours going through every road in Hernan, trying to make sure we had coverage.
And had a hard time getting it past the council at that point, so.
We had to, bicycles to be allowed on the street at that meeting. So things have come a long way.
All right, well, thanks, Bryce. This is exciting.
I, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on the 24th, and I know Marsha Burchard's actually the rep, and she had some concerns in regards to some of the density issues like downtown, and, you know, she stayed like a dismount zone and things like that. Are those gonna be factored in? Like, I mean, obviously, this is a big plan, so, I mean, this is fantastic, but are those factors gonna be considered at all?
That, that issue kind of came up late in the process.
Sure.
And so, and it was, and she brought it up, and she's, the P-VAC, it was on my side. So she brought it up at P-VAC and also with Planning Commission. And the, the approach really was, you know, valid points. As we do our sort of annual update to this, it's sort of the next round, something that we'll have to think about.
You can add some growing pains. I mean, it's a.
It's not, that opinion is certainly not universally shared by all dismounting bicycles.
Right.
Always a sticky wicket to get on.
Sure. I just, you know, it was made during a public comment, and, you know, I just wanted to, you know, at least let people know that it was stated, so. Okay, cool.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Bryce. We have one consent agenda item next week, which is an ordinance to amend Personnel Chapter, which is updating the disclosures by town officers and employees to revise the positions that are required to complete those disclosure statements of personal interest. Is this in conjunction with a change of the General Assembly?
Not necessarily.
Just a functional decision to do.
We can designate that, and we were looking at, if I call it housekeeping, we were looking at equivalent employees, some were and some weren't.
Okay.
So we're trying to even it out, and everyone that has certain types of duties to be required to do that.
So like the government officials now in there, the deputy government finance is now in there, so.
Okay.
Just gonna clean them up.
All right. Those are gonna be due, change, right? How about that?
Yes, it is.
I'm sure Mickey will be chasing us down.
If you're being chasing me down, come in.
Questions or comments or anything on that?
No, it's a good idea.
Okay, awesome. All right, so I see Ann has joined us. We have a discussion about our town council community roundtables, and where are we going with that? So, hi, Ann.
Yes, we do. Hello. And I just wanna be clear, this is not my discussion. We were sitting in random management team, I said, you know, I don't really have a presentation. This is really the council's initiative. We've had two successful roundtables by pretty much any measurement. I mean, I think there was just an overwhelming appreciation for the council for having this kind of a forum. People felt like they were heard. They felt like some legitimate issues were raised. And so I will say the NRC was wonderful to work with for the last one, and we haven't directly approached them about doing it again, but my sense is that they'd be open to that. So really, what we wanted to get to this evening is a sense of where you all want to go specifically for this next one, but in general, are there any comments or issues we wanna raise as we're moving further into this?
What you wanna see in the world, what you wanna see less of, what went right and wrong from your perspective, so we can try to tailor it to those.
When we set this up, we had talked about October for the third one, so, you know, we also would like to kind of get pretty specific in terms of whether that's. I was gonna say, not September, because if we're trying to get any parents to show up, September is a wash. Yeah. So I agree with you.
Teacher conferences, getting a school.
And so we've done an evening, weekday night?
We did a Saturday morning, and we did a Tuesday night. And the reason we changed to Tuesday night was when we were at the NRC, and they said Saturday mornings were just crazy for parents.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, so, you know, June is almost as bad as September, really, as everyone, as kids can attest. But we did, we got a good turnout. So, and at the NRC, they did have childcare for us, which was used, so.
Was there a larger turnout at one timeframe or the other?
You know what? They look pretty similar. We didn't count, but they were pretty similar. They were pretty similar.
It was a different segment.
Different people?
Right, right. About 50 at each, including staff and council.
So I guess my question would be is, who have we not reached?
A lot of people.
A lot of people, obviously.
We've only had a hundred.
And is there something we can do to possibly reach them?
I would say something, having a meeting at an HOA, you know, like a larger one or, you know, one that is underserved. I think, you know, they have, a lot of these places have spaces for it. I've, you know, they have participation for sure. That might be an idea to have something that, you know, Four Seasons is gigantic, but you have others as well. And I know that a lot of them have meetings also over at the police station or the, because some of the HOAs have the, their meetings over at the building that's over by the police, so there's parking and things like that, so that might be.
Is that at 397 they have their meetings?
I believe, yes, yes.
All right.
Well, I would say Four Seasons isn't gonna be ADA accessible, so if you are wanting to consider that, I used to live over there, and you have to go upstairs, stairs to go to their community room. So I, and I did see a lot of people from Four Seasons come to the one we had at the NRC.
NRC, yeah.
Yeah, because they're right there. But I too think the police station would be a good location because it's easy accessibility, parking.
The only thing with the police station is, how do we say this? They're like, there are people that aren't into the government buildings, just in general. There's apprehension.
Could be into them.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, if you looked at the crowd that came here, the first one, it was a completely different crowd than at the NRC.
A lot of businesses, the first.
Yeah, but I'm talking people. I mean, it was a different segment of the town. I mean, I, nothing against the police stations, it's just there are some people that are apprehended.
We thought about trying to do it at a local business or restaurant that might be able to accommodate a space.
Well, Fairfax County does have a place in one of the shopping centers, I think it's the old Kmart Shopping Center. Do they still have that education?
I don't know if it's still there or not.
Place that they run.
It was right on the corner by Escape Room, right, across from there.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's still there or not.
Adult Learning Center? Yeah, it's still there.
Yeah, because that might be something.
Yeah, it's Fairfax County Public Works. Yeah, it's Fairfax County Public Library.
And they probably would charge us.
Or the library.
Or the library.
I was thinking the library too, but it's relatively small, that one room. I guess we could use part of the basement rooms.
You could fill it up.
We used to have meetings at church, but I don't think it would fly either, it's more of a...
That's like here. I mean, this is where we had the first one, so if you're trying to, you know, move it But then Kmart's not that much bother, so.
I want to pass a ordinance that we start calling it the Sprouts Shopping Center. It's going to take us years to make that switch.
Or we could call it New Kitchen.
That's true.
They've been here all these years.
How about the format? I mean, how do you feel about, is it working the way that it's, there really is no format? It really isn't...
I think that's why, that's why we're...
I think that's why it works, yeah.
Good, okay, all right.
I think people love the idea, they can just sit down and pepper us about anything. I just think, yeah, that's probably...
They have the agenda.
Yeah.
But it was a whole different mix because at the first one, I had a lot of people asking me specific things that I needed to follow up with them and I got their emails and I did. At the last one, I didn't have hardly anybody that wanted to know anything that I needed to follow up with anything, but they felt like they got their questions answered.
More general discussions.
Maybe I was better prepared, but there were more questions, like you said, more businesses came to the first one, so I think they were asking more real specific questions and I wanted to make sure they had the correct answers.
Okay.
One thing we did at a work event I was at was people got stickers, we kind of had a graph laid out, you know, maybe you put your top 10, it can be a graph, I'm sure it doesn't matter, but maybe the top 10 topics that we keep hearing over and over that people want to talk about and just have people, like anonymously, just put a sticker in those, so at least we get a visual of what do people really want to talk about? And you can do it beforehand, like as they walk in, so you kind of have, it looks like a lot of people want to talk about transportation or downtown development or metro or whatever. And it's literally just almost like voting ahead of time of like, I'm here because I really want to talk about, and they can put a sticker on every, every of the 10, you know, topics.
Does that then influence the discussion? And how does that work? How does that then...
I think you can still keep the discussion really open. It's more just, I think, to give some context to it because I think it helps, in the format we, the way we've done it is, you know, those same, I like that the council members moved, I think that's fine, but that same group sort of sits with, they don't hear as much of the other feedback. So I know when we went to different groups, some tables really wanted to talk about different things, so I think it would help just to go, oh, good, lots of people want to talk about what I want to talk about, or I want to talk about this, it's not as common, but that's okay because that's what I want to talk about. So I just think that might be an interesting visual for us and for, you know, the folks that attend.
As long as there's anything else.
Oh, sure.
Right, miscellaneous.
Senator Voiskod does, like she has a board on environment, everything else, and then there's other, and then the other part, you know, there's...
And you can have that be free form where they can write stuff.
Yeah.
Get with her office and see how that might work.
That's great.
Because it truly, for me, it's truly about them.
Yeah.
And where they want to spend their time and what they value.
Okay. So this would be weather dependent, but we have some nice picnic tables out in front of the Old Town Hall and that's a space that we could maybe attract people to come, maybe people would just stop by when they're on the bike trail. But we would have to have a contingency plan or just say rain date or whatever.
I don't think we've got enough seating out there.
We could probably bring some tables.
Work that one.
I like the openness of that, right?
That's a cool idea.
And then as people go by, you don't have to feel so formal, like it just comes, the kids come around.
Coming off the park.
Yeah, but I go back to what you said, it's not the underserved sort of communities, but it's almost like we should go there, we should go to them.
Yep.
It's my feeling, I mean, that's great, it's convenient for us and it looks cool, but there are people out there that I think could really be a voice.
I think, yeah, it's one of like churches, I don't know if we can do that as a, if we have to maybe, I don't know, the people with the separation churches days though, but I know that a lot of people, yeah, I mean, I'm just...
Well, we just church partnerships and you can like state ahead of time, but it's not affiliated, it's... Maybe, I know Bill mentioned HOAs, there are a lot of, my worry about that is there's a lot of them and, you know, how many can we see, but maybe we need to, in addition to the roundtables, like kind of divide and conquer and try to get into some of these HOAs. I don't have on a hunter's creed and it's usually pretty well received.
HOA meetings are usually like three or four people, just my experience.
I went to council when I was...
I was at Old Hunt and it was 75 people there. I did Old Hunt this year, probably 75. And I went in with a cover.
I had the courage.
This is also a...
No offense.
We could also try to get into like Burke Dale Apartments and some of the other apartment communities.
Absolutely.
There you go.
If they have an event that's already happening, like I know last night, National Night Out, you know, we were able to get out there, but...
And the chair of the, president of the HOA, or the condo association, whatever their title is, at World Gate, said that they were willing to post something as well. And, yeah, might get a whole bunch of people right off the parkway.
We want to do more, obviously.
Well, a lot of ideas, but we haven't been really helpful.
Is October, is everybody, is that kind of big sense?
What are the dates we're looking at?
Yeah.
I don't think we are yet.
So we can do hog, do a little locale. I think venues.
Devil's knife version.
We'll throw some concepts out to a venue and then we'll get some dates back.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in October, we have VML and the Homecoming Parade. I think we need to make, well, back to school nights will be over by October, so I was trying to think of things in the community to not try to compete with. Do we have a thought on weekend or evening or, or do we want to see like what venues are available?
It doesn't matter to me, we'll travel.
I think evening, I think given the, you know, the outreach and what we're trying to accomplish, I feel like evening is better.
And with the fall time...
I'm not opposed to, you know, we alternating it, maybe we do one on a Saturday, one's on a, one out of three, but I feel like evening better serves who we're trying to meet with.
And people with kids, soccer, things like that on Saturdays, gigantic, it's huge.
Right, so. So there are a few ideas here.
Seven days, five days.
Are there six? Is there one or two that everybody sort of likes? Then you talked about the police station, you talked about the Fairfax County space over at the Sprouts Shopping Center, the library, the churches, HOAs, that's what I heard.
Artspace was mentioned.
Artspace, all right.
Yeah, I'll try anything that doesn't look intimidating.
Artspace might be an interesting, nice space, central.
Oh, it's gone.
Yeah, let's use it.
It's on, it's on, yes.
So I know that Trinity Presbyterian does a lot of outreach with the Latino community and they do Lunch for the Soul, I believe it's every Wednesday. And it's, they, they take lunch either to the men and women who are waiting for work or sometimes they have a carpool that picks them up and takes them to the church. I think they actually do that more often. I wonder if that might be someplace we would like to try to get ourselves invited to.
Yeah, I will say, if we go somewhere like Artspace, which has, NRC was extremely helpful to us in getting to communities that is very difficult for us to reach, so that is a, that's a reason to think about, because I think Timothy's also does a lot, like they have a service every week in Spanish, so they do a lot of outreach to Hispanic communities. So that is something to really consider.
Yeah, I don't want to, just, I don't want to understate what Dan's saying, is that they really helped us with our marketing period, they really helped us with daycare, provide, provide daycare for us. They helped us set out.
Any reason not to just do it there again?
Truly, they truly were wonderful partners.
They really were.
Maybe we could try Trinity because it's on a different part of town, because one of the things I'm thinking of is if you keep everything just right in the center, all the people that are on the edge, because I noticed a lot of people walking to the festival this year when it was off of the parkway. So if it's, Trinity is closer to Herndon Elementary and it is pretty accessible, then perhaps you'll get a lot of people from that side of town as opposed from the Four Seasons side.
And you're also getting all districts because now you have one, two, and three being served, so that's, your roadshow is taking all districts into consideration.
And we could probably reach out to Cornerstone and see if they would help.
See, I think it'd still help and actually I think that's, I have the same thought, which is just because we're not having it at their location, they may...
When I go to that cocktail and I want to talk to them, that's great.
You'd love some cocktails, they're going to help us.
So how about, let me just distill this, which is we'll approach Trinity first, what about if that does not work for some reason, what about St. Tim's, which has a similar kind of outreach?
Sure.
And then we may, perhaps then we default back to the NRC if we're not going to work with either of those two. Does that make sense?
Works for me.
Okay, good, all right. So what we'll do is go to the church and that's going to inform the dates that we then put forward to you. So I think we have a plan.
We have a plan.
Can I, can I throw out one thing? And I'm sure this opens a big can of worms, I'm waiting for Lisa to jump out of her, out of her chair, I know. So my daughter goes to Clearview Elementary and they work really closely with Burke Dale Apartments and at every evening event, they provide school bus transportation from Burke Dale Apartments to and from the event. And I know that costs money to get a bus, but we have a van, don't we, at Parks and Rec? What's involved with us providing transportation, is everybody freaking out? Okay.
I thought you were going to say get a, get a school bus from Fairfax County, that would be better.
Well, that, I don't know how much that costs, but I was trying to use resources we already have and everybody's clearly...
Harbor House can do it because they have vans on site right there and they have people, well, just...
They're not their vans.
Well, they're the company that know about this, they're insured.
Maybe somebody would donate the transportation.
And Trinity Presbyterian may have transportation in the churches, so that just, I don't know how involved that is and I don't know how much it would be utilized, it is very well utilized at Clearview and there's a big participation from families that otherwise wouldn't be there, so just...
It doesn't need to ask, so we can ask and public transportation or if Trinity as well, 938.
Okay. We're good.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Okay, that brings us to a roundtable. Who would like to start us off? Bill?
I had a special, Herndon Youth Advisory Council Committee meeting with, we went over urban planning specifically on the 2030 conference plan. Lisa Gillar and Dana gave a presentation and I think it went really well. They asked really good questions, a lot of point, I mean, one of them in fact was, for example, in regards to universal design, is neurological disabilities taking a factoring in the overall plan of that? Something that probably wasn't considered now it is, so I just, it was a great meeting and pizza too, you can always get the, bribe people with pizza, but it was a great meeting and it went, it went longer than typically to an hour, it went about an hour and a half, so thank you Lisa for your work and Andrew listening, thank you too, it really went well, so thanks to staff, great.
Thank you for getting them into the meeting, creating a special meeting.
Sure, no problem, it's great.
Who's up next?
I'm sure, although, so Bill, probably you're going to do this as well, but welcome, Scott Robinson, really excited to meet you last night and welcome you to the team and thank you to Captain Anza Gruber and the rest of the HPD. As usual, I liked the new format, I actually liked the, I mean, starting at the same place is always good. I liked that we ended differently and didn't all, it's always so crowded when we all get to Four Seasons at the end, so I kind of, I liked, personally liked the new format. I know it's a lot of communities we're trying to, you know, touch and make sure we give some attention to last night, so as usual, a great event, so thank you for all, everyone that... Yep, Captain Anza Gruber was on like full speed, I think it was all the cupcakes and pies, but...
Quarterbacking, he was doing all sorts of stuff.
It was very fun.
I think it was me and the passengers.
We had a fun group, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was a good group.
Sheila and Anza Gruber were in the same car.
Yes.
That was not well thought out. Who was, is that on the...
Ann, okay.
All right, who's up next?
I had a meeting with the Vice Mayor and Supervisor Faust to get a better understanding of the whole housing activities that are going on in this area, so trying to get more informed on some of the options, but I think there's some opportunity there for us to kind of go down that path, but I'll keep researching and keep updating folks as far as my desires are.
Cool, he followed up with me after that meeting and had suggested that we get together and have like Tom Fleetwood, who's, I forget his exact title, but he's the housing guru in Fairfax County, and just all get together and see like what is possible, because it's a town, a town is different than counties we all know.
And city.
And I think that we all probably, including, you know, the county needs to better understand what is possible, so I think that's great.
Yeah, it's interesting, just, you know, flip the options.
Exactly.
Staff has started to put together, we're working on a workshop presentation discussion I'll call it, hopefully in September, it looks like probably the second, because I think Lisa Yates had the first one, she's grateful in that conversation, but we're looking to bring Tom Fleetwood in, looking to bring some of your people from VML and have a very comprehensive, robust discussion to inform you and at least get everybody on the same page, we're all operating on the same machine, so just kind of set the table. So we're looking to do that now, so that should, you should see that on the agenda for the second workshop.
Good.
Dan?
I think that was, that was the main...
Yeah, and to follow that, I know, Sazer and I talked to Bill about bringing us a presentation because we are different from the county and because of the rezoning with a couple of the areas that we have on the, I think we call it south side, I don't know why one side is east and the other side is south, it just seems like it should be...
Is it else?
I know it is, but still, that theory messes with my mind, but with some of that more affordable housing going, we need to protect it and that is one of the things that people talk about at the roundtable, that's one of the things they bring up. In fact, I have someone that wants to meet me for coffee and that's exactly what they want to talk about. They live over off of Alabama, it took them forever to find a house over there when they moved, but they love it and they want to stay here. So, yeah, we've got a lot of people there invested, so, and having seen my son, fortunately we get along, so he stayed with me to save a lot of money and he stayed in Herndon. I've had other parents tell me, well, we've dropped up for a year and then I told them they had to move out, so we must have a good relationship, thank goodness. But National Night Out was awesome, probably the driver of my car made it so, but it was a lot of fun, we got to go with a couple of Parks and Rec people that had all the swag and so that was fun. They let us give out some of the swag, so we look like the elves with some of our...
Turkey dry.
Turkey dry, no, I was doing the little bubbles, the tiny...
Remember the year that our former police chief gave out whistles? Cut that line out of them.
Yeah.
No more whistles, that was crazy.
Shiny will do brave, wow.
Family had a dog on ours too.
No!
No!
We had Diesel.
We did a K9 demonstration on ours.
I saw that on the pictures, I'm like, wait a minute, they didn't have, because I thought, only if he takes his vest off then he can like hang with people, right? Isn't he like in working mode if he has...
He tells him to...
Well, he kept, he kept in the car quite a bit, yes. But no, we did, we did a demonstration in a cul-de-sac away from people, an officer put the gear on and cut Diesel loose and he went to town.
I got to see that one, that was awesome.
And Diesel didn't let go, the sleeve came off before Diesel let go.
Wow.
I'm not volunteering for that.
It was one of our strapping officers.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, the dogs are always the best part. Yeah, so National Night Out was awesome as usual and I'm hoping when it comes to Town Managers Town return, we're going to hear about downtown development update, the water main. And the other question I keep getting asked is what's up with Aslan, if there's anything whatever to talk about.
Okay.
Those will be short conversations.
Thank you.
Can we talk about those?
Yeah, let me just say mine and then we'll break to Bill. So I just had a couple of quick things. of quick things, on Monday, Dennis Holsey and I did a really quick bus tour with the Womata marketing staff, who are, were put on a bus to go and look at all of the Phase Two stations, I believe we were only on it for like 15 minutes, drove around, talked about what's going on, but I was super excited to see that our Metro pylon is in, which I didn't know was there, because I almost never come down that little stretch of the parkway, so it's getting real, finally, our first, one of the first things we did back in 2010 was they can put a sign that says, hey guys, the Metro's over there, and now it's over there.
We need to take that down now, because we have a real one.
That's true.
Can we go take it down ourselves?
Yeah, can we do that?
All right.
We'll get that on the calendar, that's all, that's all I had, oh, and today's my granny's 97th birthday.
Awesome.
Trying to keep up with Gracie and Sheila.
All right, so first off, Scott Robinson, DPDW Director, if you haven't met him yet, there he is live, personally, he finished two weeks, he came back for third week.
Oh, good.
And that includes three water main breaks, so he's still back.
Is he grand weekend?
My dad, he can swim early.
Well, it's really funny, I rolled out to the Crestview one, like, I was on the way to Jim, wow, like 6:45 Saturday morning, and I'm out there talking to Tammy, and Scott shows up a little later, and he's out there directing bikes on the detour, he jumped in the deep end of the pool early on, so it was a, sorry, pardon the pun, he betted the sinkhole in this case.
It was a complicated break.
Yes, we'll get to that in a second. Number two is, for those who don't know, Amina has taken a job with Arlington County's Board, she's going to work for one of the supervisors in Arlington County, is part of the corporate board's operation down there, her last day is Friday, so Lindsey Jones is coming here from Parks and Rec to take administrative system duties from Amina, starting to move forward until the show's adjourned, so that, that will happen obviously Monday. Number three is the water main break on Crestview, the crews, we, after temporarily providing water on Saturday, filling things in to open Crestview back up, that took all day, all night to accomplish that, and we were unable to secure a contract to come out on Monday to repair the damage, so our crews rolled Monday and replaced about 25 feet of pipe in ground, the hole plus some other corrosion spots that we identified, and went, hmm, let's go next if we don't cut those out, so we just pulled about 25 feet, repaired that, those repairs were completed, and while they were working on that, we had another water main break on, right, at Lisa's?
Lisa, yeah.
At Lisa, took about 15 homes out of play, that one was hard to isolate, we couldn't find the leak for, until probably about 2 o'clock this afternoon, I was in a meeting with her, I think it was about 2 this afternoon, when you got the text, and so because, because they, those 15 residents were affected by both water main breaks, we did contact each one, one of the residents personally, we did offer, and some took us up on putting up open hotels last night, just to make sure that they, and some just wanted water, we kept going, got them water, and brought it over, it's just a means to make sure that they understand, constantly, you know, part of the business, get high and dry, and so, again, I applaud Tammy's staff for showing the initiative to put that together and doing it, and then, it was already in motion by the time I found out about it, and I thought that was wonderful, that was great, great dishes by her, NRC, they did a great job. So that one, they had located the two, and it started to rain sideways about three, so I'm not sure, do you have an update on where they were by the end of the day?
Yeah, everybody has water now, about an hour ago, they got water, and so they're back to like, yeah, and then they'll prepare the bow.
I think those things always happen, every time.
It's threes. Thankfully, then we're done.
So we passed three, right?
If not, I'm sending them back to Aslan. But anyway, as for the downtown, it is not, not much has occurred since last we spoke in summer, we have, we have, cops, law people on leave, some fire people on leave, and getting, getting synced up, they did get a new attorney that just started this week, I believe, who is handling our issues, and we're setting up a meeting with the new council over there, hopefully sometime soon, and again, going down our checklist, just calibrating where we are and where we're going.
Trying to get to closing.
Trying to get to closing, so that, that's, so again, not a whole lot there. As for Aslan, the ball's in their court.
Okay.
There's nothing that is holding them up other than that.
For the tasting room?
Yes.
I know, Cesar and I were, hell, it was a group of people, and they were asking, and we were like.
Well, there's, there was an article that said rehose them.
Yeah, there's a lot.
You know, it's kind of funny when you have somebody out there that wants to say things, and you really can't rebut them, let's say, what that article said, and I didn't read it based on your characterization of the article, I think it's a stark departure from fact.
Yes.
Remind, this is what I would say.
He said.
Yes, so, anyway, so that's about all I can say about Aslan.
And I forgot one, our neighbors all had their recycling out on Monday, which normally, my recycling goes out on Tuesday night, and so we remembered.
I took mine out Monday and this morning.
Oh, wait, how has it been so far this week?
That's what I was going to ask.
Pretty good, I mean, the majority of people seem to have gotten embraced in.
Embraced.
Here in the waiting.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a few that have reached out, we're, we're working with them on some missing things, misses or.
Sure.
And just if I could put a final point on that too, Scott Keyball, who supervises that group, I was leaving this morning, and I saw him driving around the neighborhood, looking to see who put their cans out on the wrong bay, and taking note if we've had it out wrong, so that we can circle back to them, that was a very proactive thing that Scott did, again, the way this was handled across the board by Tammy's career was phenomenal, they, the amount of outreach we did in various formats, I think, made a big difference, I, we have not, the mems office has not fielded a single call yet.
Well, that's what I was going to say, it's obvious that there has been great outreach, but I kind of thought this was going to be the thing that we, that blew up, and, you know, was.
So you're saying they got the memo?
They got the memo, the sticker, the social media posting, the press release, the skywriting.
No, but this is something, especially if you've lived in your house for a while, you just don't even really think about it, you just know when you have to take it out, so.
The road signs.
Really.
Yeah, after council, I take my thing out, so I would have been totally messed up this weekend.
I know.
That's true.
Because I would have been shaking out. I keep thinking it's Tuesday, I try to take a lot of the soccer.
But my neighbor put theirs out first, no, it, oh, yeah, so I got mine out, and then all the other neighbors were going, oh, oh.
Like dominoes.